On there. Town seal's still on there. We're up.
Good evening. Welcome to the New Market Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting from Monday, July 13, 2015. And our first order of business is to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Say welcome to our new, newest members, James Drago, who is a permanent member of the board but is not going to be sitting on the application tonight, and Steve Minatelli, who has been roped into being an alternate against his better judgment. So, thank you both for joining us. Mr. Shelton is going to remain. He's an alternate member, but he's going to remain because he has sat on the first three meetings of this application. So, the composition of the board will not change for purpose of this application. We have some minutes up for review and approval. What I like to do is defer those. I haven't had a chance to look at them candidly, and if there's no objection, I'd like to defer the review and approval of those to the next.
Make a motion. We defer minutes to the next meeting.
I second it.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Very good. And our regular business item for this evening is Waterway Realty LLC. Continuation of a public hearing on an application for two variances to allow the subdivision of an existing 19.96 acre lot into two tracts. The first is a four-acre tract to remain with the existing structures, and the second is a 15.96 acre tract for future development. The property is located at 310 Waldly Falls Road, tax map R5, Lot 85 in the R1 Zone. The following variances have been requested. Number one, a variance from Section 1.05(c)(1) to allow a boundary adjustment on a non-conforming lot, which does not bring the lot into closer conformance with the ordinance. And number two, a variance from Section 3.03(b) of the New Market Zoning Ordinance to allow four units on a four-acre lot where, under the maximum residential density requirement of one-half unit per acre, eight acres of land will be required. And again, the lot's located at 310 Waldly Falls Road, tax map R5, Lot 85, in the R1 Zone. There was a third variance that was granted at the last meeting, and these are the two remaining variances remaining for us to consider. To recap briefly, we've had a site walk, and at the last meeting, we spent a fair amount of time trying to look at maps and figure things out. And what we asked the applicant to do is to, and the applicant, I think, asked, is to go away and come back with what we hope to be their best possible case so that we can move on to the merits of the application at long last. So, all that being said, good evening. Please step up to the microphone and introduce yourself so the people at home know who you are.
My name is Brian Colcia. I represent Waterway Realty LLC. And if the board would grant me a little leeway here for a few minutes, I would like to state some facts before I put Tim Lavelle up. Is that okay with the chairman?
Yes, sir.
Been in business 42 years, built, done 5,000 rehabs. I've built 1,000 homes. This is no, no difference to me being in a zoning board. I've been 100 times to a zoning board. But I think we're a little blessed here to have a lawyer on the board. I'd just like to state, before my engineer gets up, I just brought two recent cases with me. Don't really pertain to this, but they're very similar. When I came to New Market and I looked at that piece of land, my, I have two people I send to auctions. We do a lot of research before we buy our property. I went, I went to Susan at the town hall. Susan told me that the buildings sat on two acres, and 18 acres was in current use, and I would have to pay the 10% to get it out of current use. Before I bought the property, I went, I looked at the buildings, I walked the land. As I said, I've built 1,000 homes. I have 20 streets I've named. My thing is, I, when I went to bid, I look at liens of record, I look at taxes, I look at the property itself, I look at what I can reap or yield out of the property. I figured if the units were sitting on two acres, and the 18 acres, I walked it, and I felt I could get a subdivision on the high side of that lot. If I was to go with your, what you're requesting, eight acres, it wouldn't even make sense to do a subdivision. It's six lots, wouldn't make sense. The road's $400,000. The land is basically worthless after I put a road in. You, at eight, eight units, you're going to be getting eight taxpayers, affordable housing, and eight new homes in town paying taxes. I have two cases here. One is Pelham. Going to go through them real quick. Bought this one in Pelham. It was a 4,500 square foot split, had three units in it. Had a five-bedroom unit, had a two-bedroom unit in between it, and it had a one-bedroom unit up top. It's zoned over there for two-family only. Three families are not permitted in Pelham. Town gave the guy permission to put a meter on. They gave him an eight-bedroom septic system. There was a leather in there from the abutter on, on 09. They never did anything on it, never acted on it. So, the town is not making me go through ZBA. They're going to do a special exception and grant it. I have another one here that I just did in Manchester. Yeah, it was 500 square feet short. I needed 5,000 square feet to build because I was next door to the ex-mayor. He brought everybody in the world. They denied it. I took it to court, and I have a lot now. I had another lot on the other side of town. It was 1,000 feet short. I got that three-family variance. What I'm saying to you is, we're fortunate to have a lawyer on the board because, understand, I'm not a stupid man, even though I only graduated half-three through the ninth grade, but I have eight lawyers, and two of them specialize in this, which is Andy Sullivan and Roy Tisley from Bernstein and Shore. This is not the way I want to go. I take this decision very seriously, and you know, once you make your decision, and if you deny me, the next thing I'm going to do is ask for a 10-day appeal, and you're going to deny me again, and then the town's going to spend some money because I'm going to go to court, and I'm going to ask for attorney's fees. Not the way I want to go. I'm trying to be honest and upfront. There was no file when I went to see Susan, but she gave me that information. I relied on it. I bid $400,000 for this property, plus back taxes. So, I'm going to leave it up to my engineer from now. But understand, if it takes me a little longer, six, eight months, and seeing somebody in court, that is not a problem. But I'm not looking to go that way. I'm looking to just get my value out of what I paid. And I think I was given wrong information. I think if you guys wanted that lean to down, you should have put it as, as a note in your building plan. You're relying on a building inspector, on his knowledge of an old building inspector that I had a problem with, and I was instrumental in getting him terminated because he said he was going to slip and fall and sue the town when I went to the town administrator. So, I thank you very much, and I'll let my engineer take over now.
Good evening. Tim Lavelle from Lavelle Associates. Kind of have an overview of the property. It's been some weeks since we were here last time. As most of you know, and others that are new to the board, this property existed with two, two-family homes on it and so forth. We've got the variance for that. At the last meeting, we were discussing four acres versus eight acres, and we didn't have an entire plan. So, I have a package. Plan is going to show you the whole thing. We were lacking last time. What you have in front of you is the same thing that is up here. We have two scenarios on there. One showing a two-acre lot, which is where the, the structures exist. Again, the, the current use is on the rest of it. What the, what, the second sheet of that plan set shows is the surrounding properties. To the north, or the northwest is property controlled by the Auto, New Hampshire Automobile Society, as well as to the rear of the property. And then, on the east side, you have two different open space development, open space parcels. One is the open space for the trotter subdivision, which is up in the, just kind of touches on the corner. And then, there's the open space for the conservation, and it's the Loisel subdivision. And our proposal is to create a two or a four-acre parcel around the buildings. The buildings and the property is unique in the fact that all the structures are housed kind of up in the front and within a two-acre parcel. The rest of the land drops into some low fields and then comes back up high again. This property, when you look at it for an open space development, which is where the town's regulations kind of lean you towards, allows for an open space piece that would connect kind of all of these and make one large tract of open space. If we did a two-acre lot around the homes with an open space development, we could block out approximately 13 acres of land for open space. Again, we have, in that package in front of you, you have one that shows a two-acre scenario and the other, which is the four-acre scenario that you saw at the last meeting. In our discussions was to show, you know, what it would look like with eight acres. You can see clearly on the, the four-acre one, if you were to try and double that lot. You would kind of, you would have to go way out, and you would cut off the Loisel conservation piece from the other piece. The uniqueness about this is, it would be a benefit, I think, to the town to allow a smaller lot with this so that a bulk of that land that would essentially go with the house wouldn't be in the private ownership and would end up in an open space scenario and could be given to the town's conservation or whichever entity the town likes to receive those in. The property there, this, it has plenty of, you know, area for septic systems and so forth right there in the front. There's really no wetlands to speak of near the structures. There is municipal water, but plenty of room for septic system. The sewer system of the town does not go that far out. It's, I think, we figured it was an eighth or a quarter of a mile short. So, this is, you know, an existing and unique situation where the houses and barn are kind of clustered up to the front of the property, and, you know, adding that land and, and putting a private owner out there would, would not benefit the town in any way. It would, in fact, would be a benefit to allow it to go into an open space development. We feel that in, in the criterion for the proposal have been met. This is really kind of an existing situation. They're there. They're only utilizing two acres. Property values would increase by allowing a larger open space development, and it kind of really fits in nicely to the town's intent for the open space and not to have little pieces of open space here and there and try and make them contiguous when you read the town's ordinance for open space. So, see if I've touched on everything here. That's about it. We've, we've gone over the five criteria before. I don't need to read them again for you as you've said to me. But, you know, just touching upon them quickly, we don't feel it would adversely affect the public. We don't feel it would decrease any property values in the area. In fact, we feel it would do the opposite. And most of my other speech was explaining more about the property. And in the two-acre scenario, which is in the front of the package I gave you, at least 13 acres that could be blocked out for open space, approximately. Now, these plans haven't gone through planning or anything like that, so there would be slight changes to things. These are only so much. I hope I'm close, but, you know, when you get to the planning, they may do one thing to change some things. But ultimately, it would be around 13 acres. There's really no need to take more away to add to the open space lots. That's it.
Thank you.
And I guess in closing, if, because we're, we are here and kind of mentioning open space development and things like that, that if that were a restriction that the board felt they needed to do to accomplish this subdivision, that if any development were to be an open space development and we couldn't change our minds later, it would not be a, we would not be opposed to any such restriction. Thank you.
Thank you. What I'm going to do is ask now whether there's any member of the public who has any comment or further information to provide at this time.
I have one more thing to say. I don't think that we have any abutters or town people that are going to oppose this today.
Seeing no public comment, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the hearing. And the floor is open for deliberation and discussion.
On the four-acre proposal, I'm a little confused. There's an extra line in there that I'm not exactly following.
Which page is that? Please pass.
That's the last page of the handout.
Thank you.
It looks like there's a, is that, is that a buffer line that goes along the long straight leg of the extension? No. What's that?
Yes.
This, which?
This line here.
Yeah.
That's a buffer related to the open space development.
That's the, the 50-foot wetland setback? Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
That's what the key says.
Well, there's supposed to be 75 feet around the perimeter of the open space development. Is that shown?
Yeah, I think he just didn't draw it out because he brought it out to the, because it's on that side. Okay. That's a wetland setback.
Remember, we're not, we're not passing on the viability or lack of viability of the proposed or the thought of subdivision. We're here to consider the evidence in relation to the variance. That's being requested. But it is helpful to kind of understand the information that's put in front of us.
I guess there are a couple of things I've got. Looking in terms of raw land, I don't see the need to grant any of the variances requested. I wish that, you know, when he brought up, made his case, economic viability is a valid, can be entered into the discussion for the uniqueness of the property. We didn't hear anything about that earlier. We just heard tonight that, you know, he can't make it viable. I guess, in my mind, I'd like to know a little bit more about, about that because, I mean, I can see the wetlands. I can see what you're trying to do, but the case was never made that part of the hardship was the economic viability of the project. Am I making sense?
I, I hear you. I think we all hear you.
So...
So, carry on.
I know, pardon. You know, with, with eight units on there, you know, I'm, I'm looking at, can six units make it viable? I haven't seen any kind of an economic breakdown at all that says, this is my break-even threshold. This is my profit margin. This is what, you know, those type of economic analysis should have entered into the discussion on the uniqueness of the parcel. And they've not been presented. We've, we've just dealt with the wetlands and the fact that, you know, and I would have liked to have seen that. But right now, on the evidence presented, I don't have any basis to judge the economic impact.
And you're viewing this in terms of hardship?
Hardship. Strictly hardship.
Okay.
If, if, if to develop what he's got here, I've seen a fairly reasonable plan, but if he's going to lose money on it, then it's not viable, and then that gets into the discussion on hardship. Could get into the discussion on hardship. Right now, it's never been developed as evidence. Never, no evidence has been presented to that effect.
Anything else?
That's it for me right now.
Anyone else have, hold on a second. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were going to stand up to speak. Anybody else? Have any comments this time? Rich, you had a lot of thoughts last time.
Does it look like he wants to reduce the four-acre lot to 2.27 now?
That's one of the options he's looking at. So, that's what, that's going to be what we decide in the second part of it.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
So, I mean, the question is, not so much what it, what, what would or could some kind of subdivision look like, but what is the evidence in terms of the specific variances that are being requested?
Well, I'm not really looking at a subdivision. I'm looking at the buildings that are there.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And, and the area that, to meet the zoning that he needs.
Mm-hmm.
Now, if we're going to grant relief on things, well, that's a different story. But, but all in all, our prime logic is, is this R5, Lot 85.
Correct.
To me, that is the, that's the whole CBA application.
Mm-hmm. So, what's your thought, Rich?
I've got to be convinced beyond a reasonable doubt that it fits in our zoning, which is going to be hard to do, showing, you know, hardship involved.
Correct.
You know? What's, what's the hardship?
Not, not to a, not beyond a reasonable doubt, but to a reasonable degree of certainty.
Well, I, I, I'm not being unreasonable because I'm looking at the zoning versus what they're looking for.
Yeah.
And I think...
Bear in mind that the burden is on the applicant.
Yeah, the burden is definitely on the applicant to prove this point.
I think if it was a six-acre lot altogether, you know, and he wanted a variance for that, it'd be different. But there's definitely eight acres here.
So, what you're addressing, so which, are you addressing the hardship, Jonathan? Is that what you're having in mind?
Or just the, the spirit of the ordinance?
Okay. I think this is something we discussed last time as well.
Yeah.
Wayne, did you have anything you wanted to add at this point?
Oh, yes, my question.
Well, it almost looks like, you know, if, if he was granted what's allowed, which is eight acres, then I guess it would reduce his subdivision from eight lots to six lots.
Correct.
Is it viable then? I haven't seen no facts and figures, so I don't know, but...
That's correct.
Maybe yes, maybe no.
But there's not, there's not, Bob has pointed out, there's not evidence, one way or the other.
And I, right now, the way I'm looking at it, based on the evidence presented, I don't see enough hardship in this, in this, on this lot to grant the variances we're looking for. I'd be, I'm just not convinced.
I outlined my views in the last meeting, and I haven't, I haven't seen anything tonight to make me change. They're very similar to what you have expressed and what Rich has expressed here tonight, and what Jonathan has expressed about the spirit of the ordinance and the, the burden of showing unnecessary hardship. I'm not going to repeat all that. It's in the record from the last meeting. Does anybody else have any comments, thoughts? I am convinced that we've given this, this is our fourth meeting addressing this issue. We've taken a site walk, and we've taken a good, given the applicant lots of opportunities to present information. So, I think this has been a pretty complete hearing. Anybody else have any comments, thoughts, points they want to raise? I'm happy to entertain a motion if somebody wants to make one. If there's no further comment or discussion.
Do we want to vote on one or the other? I mean, I think...
I think the second one drives the first one.
Correct. That's what I was going to get at.
There's no, I don't, I can't see a scenario where we're going to, where we're going to grant one and deny the other.
Correct.
Given the facts and circumstances of this application. I think as long as it's clear on the record what the motion is, then I'm happy to take them up in any order. them up in any order.
We want to reconsideration. Thirty days after the date on which the...
The board voted denied.
...which the written decision was actually filed.
No, that's only if the, that's only if the minutes are denied, five days after the vote.
Okay.
So, so thirty days after the date on which the board voted denied.
We usually get them over the stage toward...
Bob, I see you scribbling away furiously. Are you putting together a motion?
Yeah, that's what I'm doing. I'm just trying to make sure it reads somewhat intelligently. There's a challenge right there.
Take a time, and the floor is still open, if people have come up with things they wanna, they wanna say.
relief from the conditions of Section 3.03B that would allow four units on four acres where eight acres are required, because the applicant failed to provide evidence that the lot could not be developed in compliance with the ordinance. Do I need to, need to say something about hardship? No, I...
Yeah, he failed to present, and I think also the spirit of the ordinance.
Well, evidence that proved, evidence that...
Established.
Established hardship that the lot, and that the variance is contrary to the spirit of the ordinance.
You wanna just take it from the top?
Or is it consistent?
Let's just take it from the top, so we can all understand exactly what the motion is.
Make a motion to deny the variance request for relief from the conditions of Section 3.03B that would allow four units on four acres where eight acres is required, because the applicant failed to provide evidence establishing hardship that the lots could not be developed in compliance with the ordinance, and that the variance is contrary to the spirit of the ordinance.
Okay.
That's your motion?
Yes.
I'll second it.
For the discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye from me as well. All those opposed? And then, I'm gonna suggest that, to make the record complete, that you propose a motion to deny the variance under Section 1.05C1 for the reasons already stated.
Second, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
For the discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And for the record, you have 30 days to file a request for rehearing. Take a look at RSA 677:2, and talk to your lawyer. If you talk to Roy Tilsley, tell him I said hello.
Okay. I won't be talking to him, Brian will.
Okay.
I'm just the Lancer there.
Gotcha. Okay, any...
Just, just...
Further new or old business to come before the board at this time?
No new or old business. I don't have anything.
Welcome to our new members.
Thank you.
There's no...
We have a meeting on August 31st.
August 31st.
We probably have one before that.
There are also opportunities, the New Hampshire Municipal Association does training for zoning board members.
Yep.
And planning board members, which the town will pay your fee to go, and for your mileage.
Do you have information on that?
Talk, ask Sue, or check the New Hampshire Municipal Association website. They do it once every year.
The Office of Energy and Planning does a workshop once a year, and then the Local Government Center does a workshop, or the New Hampshire Municipal Association does workshops in the fall. There's usually three workshops on consecutive one day.
Okay.
We'll get that information to you when they announce it.
I think it would be very helpful.
With the exception, with the exception of Jonathan, I think we've all been through them.
Okay.
Yes.
And it's good. If you guys go up to...
Not until September.
Okay.
You guys go up together, and it's, it's a good, you know, saves the town a little bit of money on mileage, and it's good.
Motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
If there's no further new or old business, motion to adjourn, firsted and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you very much.
Too many pictures.